All right, so to get us started for today, as we wait for a couple more people to join us, we're going to show you our newest December deal in the shop. Okay, so that was a little shop video with a December deal for you that actually isn't going to be premiered on our social media until tomorrow, but we just thought we'd kick off tonight's town hall with a little shop video. Plus, the music put me in a good mood, so I hope you guys are with me, joining me with that. So, welcome officially to our December Town Hall. If you have any questions that you didn't pre-submit, you can put them in the Q and A, or you can put them in the chat, and we'll try to address them as we can. We're going to kick things off tonight with a message from our new interim CEO. So she has a video, we're just going to show that now.
Welcome all to our third virtual town hall meeting. I'm Tammy Severino, and I'm Girl Scouts of Suffolk County's interim president and CEO. I'm also a longtime supporter and champion of Girl Scouts of Suffolk County, and a proud mom of two Suffolk County Girl Scouts. I've served on Girl Scouts of Suffolk County's Board of Directors for many years. I'm also inspired by the continued dedication to service from both our girls and our volunteers. As you well know, 2020 has proven to be especially challenging, and yet you all continue to do extraordinary work in the community and further the Girl Scout promise of helping others at all times. I want to take a moment to thank all of you for your support of the 17th Annual Smith Point Light Show. As you know, proceeds from the show benefit our girls in a multitude of ways, such as girl leadership programming, outreach services, and much more. If you haven't already purchased your tickets, it's not too late. The Smith Point Light Show is a fun and safe way to celebrate the holidays with your family. Also, don't miss our all-new Girl Scout Holiday Way display, featuring five new displays designed by some of our very own Suffolk Girl Scouts. You can learn more at smithpointlightshow.com. As always, thank you so much for your commitment to making our world a better place and to serving as exemplary role models for our girls. I want to wish you and your families a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Tammy. Tammy's just joined us a few weeks ago, and she's already got everybody going and got everybody excited to continue her Girl Scout journey. So next up, and later on, I have a new holiday light show video, as opposed to the other holiday light show video that we played on the last two calls. A new, brand-new video, just, just, just here for you guys. More premieres, couldn't get any better. All right, so first up, we have Kelly, who's in charge of product sales, and she's going to talk to you about the new upcoming cookie season.
Hi everyone, it's nice to see everybody here tonight, and happy holidays. So today, we actually have cookies starting in like less than a week. So cookies actually starts on 12/21, and initial sale ends on January 29th. So it's a little over a month to get the girls going and get the girls hyped up, and to get them to do their digital cookie sites. This is imperative this year. We don't know what this year's going to bring. Last year, we, we got a couple weekends of boot sales, and before we got shut down. This year, who knows? So the sooner these girls get set up on their digital sites, the better off they'll be. So I'm going to jump on our website to share our screen, just to kind of show you guys where to find anything cookie that you need in Suffolk County. So once you get to our website, you see this little section here, this says Cookies and More, okay? And the beautiful banner says Cookies are coming, because they are. They're on their way. I actually had someone email me today, "You said they start this week, can I get cookies?" Like some, like random person, I was like, "No, not quite yet." So this is where you're going to go for all the information you need. If for some reason you can't find it, it's very helpful to look here in the search bar. If you put in, for instance, you want to pay your troop bill, and you type that in, bam, there's a section to pay your troop bill. So it's very handy to know where the search bar is. If you have girls that want to get, you want to get them really excited, show them what to do under the Cookie Cellar section. Lots of fun stuff here. That goes through their resources we have for them. Rewards, digital cookie. Again, it's imperative we get them started sooner rather than later. The welcome email is scheduled to go out this week, so the girls should get a welcome email that gets them going to set up their site, so it's ready to go on the 21st. I believe they're still working on our upload, but it's still scheduled to go out this week, so hopefully there'll be no glitches. But the sooner they're up and running, the better. Another handy-dandy website I want to show everybody, just to backtrack a minute, there's a fantastic volunteer section, where all the trainings we had are all here. There's tons, there's tons of information on this site. But I wanted to share the bakery's website. I want to share that too, because I think it's a great tool. And when I do cookie rookie training, I show all those leaders this site, because, you know, cookies is very overwhelming at the beginning, you know? And not even just at the beginning, the wholesale. You know, it's, it's a beast, you know? I say that every time, it's a beast. But there are so many tools on the Little Brownie Baker website, that it's like wrapped up in a, in a box with a bow right on top. Volunteer section. There's a section here for families, for teens, for girls. Tells them activities to do, cookie rookie programs, how to bling your booth if we do booths, play games online, especially for the little ones. So there are so many resources out there, that even if you can't have an in-person meeting, if you could do what I just did and share your screen with the families, if you need help with the PowerPoint, we have one, I'm more than happy to share anything I have, and we can get you going, so that you're, you're ready to go, to, to get these parents and families excited for cookies. We don't know what the wholesale's going to look like, but we know, at the beginning, we want to get them going on their digital, because that's really the key this year. If anything happens to change with boot sales, we're hoping to revisit, you know, how everything looks mid-January, and we'll let everybody know about that. But these websites we have for you, with all the tools that are available, are just fantastic. And it would really be nice to see everybody looking here and, you know, just using all these resources. You know, instead of just doing copy paste like we have from years before, it's not a normal year. We can't do that in this, in this COVID pandemic. We have to think outside the box, and there are so many starting points here. It really is a great tool to use. Thank you, and I will see you next month.
And I know, a lot of times, that when, when they get their welcome email, it goes to spam, right Kelly?
Oh, good point, yes, thank you Jenna, I didn't mean to say that. Yes, tell, tell parents to check their junk, their spam, their clutter, whatever folders they have that are labeled like that kind of stuff. Because even mine, mine, I got my sign on the other day, because I'm council, and mine was in my clutter. So it doesn't even work right for me. So, and Melinda's too, everyone knows Melinda, Melinda's also was in her clutter. So do tell them to do that before they panic. If for some reason by next week, they still don't have that welcome email, tell them to shoot us an email at productsales@gssc.us, and we will get them going and see what the glitch is, okay?
Thank you Kelly. We have, Kelly did some cookie rookie trainings for new leaders, or leaders that just want to refresh their course, and we're going to get those posted to the website in the next week or so. She's always great at answering people's questions, walking people through, even people that have been doing cookies forever sometimes need coaching with this new environment that we're all in. So Kelly is your person to go to for all matters cookie and nuts and candy, a little bit of boot sales. She's also a very good crafter. So thank you Kelly for that.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Honora's going to be up next?
Okay, hello all. Sorry, just give me one second. Okay, so my name's Honora, and I am the program specialist. So what that means is I get to work with the girls virtually now, because of COVID, being able to work on their badge requirements, being able to work on journeys. And I am concluding my December programs this week. Right now, we're doing a winter wellness series. But, um, coming up, we're preparing for the new year, so I have a lot of really exciting programs that we'll be doing, and...
Sorry, Honora, can I pause you for like two seconds?
Yeah.
Sorry, Kelly, can you un-share your screen? Thank you. So then we can see Honora's pretty face, there we go, sorry, thank you.
Here it is. So yes, we have a lot of really exciting programs coming up in January and February. I'm not going to name all of them, because there is about 40 across the line of all the six levels. But I did want to point out some of my favorite choices. So I am going to be doing a winter STEM series, as well as a winter art series. Those are going to be the first two weeks in January. So for instance, we'll be doing, for the older girls, we'll be doing an experiment with Arctic animals and learning how they stay warm during colder temperatures. And so they'll be doing, learning about being an eco advocate, and relating it to how they can help the community and environment to keep those Arctic animals healthy and happy. We are also going to be offering combined programs for each level. So we might have Daisy, we're going to have a Daisy Brownie, we'll have a Junior Cadet, and we'll have a Senior Ambassador event. And that's going to be in celebration of Martin Luther King Day, which is on February, January 18th is the actual holiday. So that's going to be that week, that we will be talking about diversity, inclusivity, culture, and how we can all work together as a team, because that, you know, unity begins with you. So we want to make sure the girls are being exposed to other cultures, other languages, and really learning about inclusivity and diversity. We are also going to be having a couple journeys in closer to the end of February, early March. Those are going to be for our older girls, right now, I have four, four different journeys running. And the way that we've been doing it virtually is separate, separating it into three sessions. So we'd have a part one, a part two, and a part three. The way that these are going to run in the end of February, early March, is we're going to be skipping weeks. So it won't be consecutive, but it might be Tuesday of one week, then you skip a week, and then Tuesday the next week, giving them time to really get the most out of their journeys. I know the last set of journeys worked out really well, but time was very limited, and I want them to be able to complete that journey. So we are spacing out a little bit differently. And we are doing all of our cookie badges in February. And one really exciting program that I am super excited about facilitating is the Girl Scout World Thinking Day. It's going to expose them to empowering women, and how to learn how to be an empowering role model for their younger Girl Scouts, and really thinking about how they can be the best that they can be. So, so far, those are the programs that I have come up with. Oh, and one last thing, we had also gotten some suggestions from troop leaders at, I think it was the first town hall that I got to be a part of, about their troops being able to meet girls at the same level that aren't in their troops. So what I'm planning to do is a meet and a mingle. So the girls will be doing recipe swaps, they will be creating their own baked good, and they will share it with different cadets or different ambassadors, and they'll all meet in one session, and we will be having a nice recipe book. And I'll also be showing a cookie recipe that I love to make as well. So I thought it'd be really cute for them to do a meet and mingle, and get to know other troops in their community and in their service unit. All right, that's it for me, back to Jenna.
Thank you, Honora.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hey, so next up is going to be Jackie, and she's got some news about membership.
Hey, everybody, thank you for having me on again. My name is Jackie Morgan. Hope you're having a great holiday season and preparing for the possible snow that is coming in the next two days. So I just have a few things I want to go over. First and foremost, we've successfully migrated to our new Salesforce platform. It took a little time, and it was a little bit of a struggle, but we made it, and things are going well. And for the volunteers, what you may notice is that you have gotten an email from GSUSA asking you to log into your MyGS account, to reset your password. If you haven't gotten the email, it's okay, you can just go to MyGS, and when you click on the link, it'll automatically ask you to log in and reset your password. So if everybody could do that, once you go in there, you'll notice it's a little more user-friendly. You'll see a few different kind of things that you can do, but all of the same functionality as far as re-registering your family, re-registering your daughter. If you're a troop leader, you'll see the option to see who's in your troop, and who's registered, and who still needs to register. On that note, on-time patches have finally arrived. On-time was a very long time ago, and, you know, but they're here, and they got here, so which is good. So we were waiting for them with bated breath, but they're adorable. Our Lemon Up Girl is adorable with her little shoes. So for the next two weeks before the holiday, we're going to be packing those patches up by troop, and we will get them out to the service units as soon as possible. I would expect them probably when we get back from the holiday break, because we are closed that week between Christmas and New Year's. So we're going to do the best we can to get them out as quickly as possible. If you have any questions, you can let your membership specialist know. But again, we will get those out sooner than later. Today, if you've seen our Facebook, we just launched a Girl Scouts Feeding New York Challenge with partnering with Nashville County and Island Harvest. So what we're asking Girl Scouts to do is to donate food. Two of the days are December 18th and 19th. December 18th, you can go to Camp Edie, right on our porch, and you can drop off food in the bins that are going to be there. And then on the 19th, there are going to be also Camp Edie and two other locations in Suffolk County. One is close to the Riverhead Cider House, and then there's one in Melville. That flyer is on our social media, so you will see it there. And if you have any questions, again, you can reach out to me, or you can reach out to your membership specialist, and we can give you more details. Anybody who does donate will receive a patch. So once you do your donation, there is a link on the flyer that you can go to a Wufu form and fill out how many patches you need, and then those will be mailed to you once we're done with the donation. So again, if you have any questions, let us know. So the membership department's been working really hard on bringing some programming to everybody. So this is a kind of retention recruitment event for us. So we're doing a baking with Jen, which we have gotten, is hugely successful. We have over 150 participants, so we're super excited about that. And that's going to be in January. And then also in January, we're going to start our Craft Corner Series, which will be once a month. It'll be a fun craft for girls to do, to just come on and have a good time, meet other girls, and kind of do some fun things. We're also going to be running a STEM program that's going to start in February. And again, all of these are for existing Girl Scouts, and then we're asking those existing Girl Scouts to maybe bring a friend who's interested in either Girl Scouting or STEM, or just, you know, wants to do something more than just kind of hang out in the house when it's cold and we can't really do anything or go anywhere. So join us for all of those great things as well. And lastly, really what I just want to remind everybody is that we still are allowing in-person meetings. But because of the microclusters that we've heard about, and some of the, you know, yellow and zones and things like that, just be prepared that we may have to, at a moment's notice, reduce the number of girls that are allowed to be in an in-person meeting, or we may have to go completely virtual. We're not there yet, so don't anybody get nervous. But I just want to make everybody aware that we are watching those microcluster numbers. If the governor does go yellow or orange in specific areas, we will have to make those adjustments to make sure that our Girl Scouts are safe, and then our volunteers are safe. So if you definitely, if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm happy to help. The membership team is always available to answer any kind of questions you have. If you know girls in your troop who have not re-registered yet, there's still time. We have lots of great things coming. Honora's just said a whole bunch of amazing programs that they're doing. The cookie sale's coming, and you need to be registered to sell cookies, and all kinds of great things through the membership department. So if you need help, and we're still running our weekly raffle, so if they do re-register, they will be put in the raffle for the $75 gift card. All right, well, thanks so much, and back to Jenna.
Sorry, I'm getting everything ready for the next person. So next, we have Lisa. She's a volunteer that works, she used to work in the, with the council directly, but she's been doing amazing things with her troop. And she's going to, we have a presentation that we're going to show you with her now. Let me just share my screen.
Okay. Hi, everybody. First, I just wanted to thank council for inviting me to speak tonight. I'm really excited to be here. I love being part of the membership department when I was working with council, and I love being a volunteer. So I'm really excited to be here and share everything that I've been doing with my troop and my service unit. Okay, so let's get started. Okay, you can go to the first slide. So first, I just wanted to talk about the service unit. I don't know if there are any service unit coordinators listening right now, but my service unit, I'm very fortunate to be part of a really amazing service unit. We've always done a lot of fantastic programs for the girls in the past. And now, with, you know, the situation with everything that's going on, we've had to transition all of our sort of service unit events to a virtual format. And our service unit coordinators and our leadership team has really done an amazing job doing that. So I wanted to talk about some of the things that you can do if you're a service unit coordinator or a part of a service unit team, some of the things you can do with your service unit. So you can go to the next slide. So our service unit did an amazing virtual field trip. We did a field trip to the Wolf Conservation Center in Salem. And the girls learned all about the wolves and what they do there, how they protect the endangered red and gray wolves. And it was just a really amazing event. We had, I don't know how many girls we had on that program, but you can see the pictures of some of the girls they sent in with their little wolf ear headbands. The service unit actually made really cute wolf kits that they gave to everybody who participated, and it was just an amazing event that everyone really enjoyed. So usually, we would normally do in-person service unit events, but because we can't do that now, we have to transition to virtual. So we've been doing a lot of virtual events. One that we did recently was for Halloween. So the, the service unit, again, the coordinators are amazing. They dropped off kits to everybody who participated, and the girls decorated pumpkins. We made bracelets in honor of Juliette Gordon Loe, whose birthday is on Halloween, a founder of Girl Scouts. And we did a lot of really great fun activities. So there are really a lot of things that you can do as a service unit virtually that normally you would want to do in person. You can transition anything to a virtual format. And the girls really were engaged the entire time. They were enjoying everything they were doing. So, so there are plenty of other virtual events. We actually have another event coming up this Friday. It's a paint night, which is going to be really awesome. And the paint kits were just delivered, and we're excited to do that on Friday. So our service unit normally would do a in-person encampment. Every September, we do it at Camp Sebaco, and we put a lot of work into it. And it's, it's always a big, huge event for our service unit. But this year, obviously, we can't do that. So we're actually planning a, a service unit virtual encampment that we're going to do hopefully in January or February. We're still working on it. It's going to be like a winter wonderland theme, something to get the girls excited, you know, after the holidays. So we're still working on that. These pictures are actually from my troop's virtual camping event that I did with them in August. So it was really a lot of fun. It was a full-day event. We started at 1:00 in the afternoon, and we went all day. We took a few 15 to 20-minute breaks. We took one break for dinner for an hour, and we ended up going the entire day doing a whole bunch of different activities, which I'll tell you about in a sec. And then we ended the night with a movie. I think we started around 8:00 at night, and the girls stayed all the way to the end. It was a full day of that, it was awesome. So we, so first, we had the girls set up their tents in their house, so everybody had a cute little tent that they could enjoy. I gave everybody a sit-upon, which I made from those Home Depot buckets. So I actually made those ahead of time with the cushions and everything, and I gave it to them with a bag of washi tape, a whole bunch of different colors and designs of washi tape, so that they could decorate their own sit-upons, and then they could use them whenever we're able to get back together and actually do camping in person, which we're hoping soon. So that this, you can't see what I'm pointing at, but... So that, so that you can see that all the sit-upons lined up, and then the next picture is all the stuff that I put in there. So I had actually a little container with all the food items, because we made edible campfires. So I taught them the different strategies for how to lay the wood and put the kindling. And so we had marshmallows and pretzel sticks, and different things to represent the different parts of the fire, so they learned how to make a campfire. We did a campfire craft also, blowing campfire craft with a little tea light, and that came out really cute. We had them decorate their own patches for different parts of the event. So they, they learned how to make a campfire, they got a campfire patch, and they got to color it themselves, and those are real patches that they can actually iron on to their vests. But they learned, oh, we learned not tying. We did that, that was a lot of fun. And then we made these little camp memory boxes. We made two swaps, a small swap and a sleeping bag swap. And so now they have those saved in their little camp memories box that they can, you know, swap with other people, once we're able to actually be together again. So it really is a wonderful time, and something that, you know, normally you think camping, you have to all be together, but it actually worked out virtually, believe it or not. And the girls were engaged the entire time and really enjoyed it. So that was probably my, my favorite thing that we've done virtually so far. It was really a lot of fun. So, oh, and the other thing, that, you know, the service unit always puts together really amazing community service activities every year. Puts together really amazing community service activities. Every year we do a Thanksgiving basket. Um, for the schools in our community, for, um, specific families that have been identified. By the school social workers as being in need. This year with so many people out of work. They actually almost doubled the number of families in need. So, um, the service unit asked us for. Um, extra baskets this year and then also for other things that the school food pantries needed. Because there were a lot of students who really, um, were, were in need and, um. Not getting what they needed at home. So all of the troops pitched in. And you can see all the beautiful baskets that were donated. Um, so normally. When I, when we did this a couple of years ago, and I did it with my Daisy troop, we actually did it as a field trip. We went to the supermarket and everyone took a part of the list. And we took a tour of the supermarket first. Everyone took a part of the list and went with an adult and got the things on the list. And then we put the basket together altogether. So we couldn't do that this year. So we just had everyone sign up for something to contribute to the basket. So, but one very creative, um, leader in my service unit actually made it a game. She, uh, Ms. Jen Leepley, who's our, uh, media specialist and data specialist in my service unit. She's phenomenal and she'd probably have her speak at the next virtual town hall. Um. She actually made it a game. She was still meeting at the time with her troop in the park. So she had, she put all the things on the shopping list for the Thanksgiving baskets. She put them in little plastic Easter eggs and spread them out and had the girls all pick two eggs and whatever eggs they got. Those were the items that they needed to contribute for the basket. It was very cute. So, um, yeah, so community service, even though we can't do things together as a group. We can still do things individually and then contribute it to the community as a group. Okay. So now I want to talk about individual troop projects. And I just wanted, I could honestly, I could talk for like three, four hours. Just what I do with my troop, but I know I don't have that much time, so I wanted to try to focus my attention a little bit. So, um, I try to think of the Girl Scout law in everything I do. And one of my favorite things is using resources wisely. I thought that was pretty appropriate for our current situation. Um, with the lack of money that we're getting from cookies and nuts. Because we're not able to do booth sales. Um, we really have to kind of tighten the belt. And try to recycle and, um, get things for free whenever we can. So I wanted to, um, talk about how I've been using resources wisely with my troop to try to save money. And then I also wanted to talk about the importance of keeping everything girl-led, because that's what we're about. Um, Girl Scouts is all about the girls being in control of what they're doing. So I wanted to talk about that. And then, um, how to transition a traditionally in-person activity to something virtual. So this obviously wasn't something that we did, um, since the pandemic. This is something that we did. Um, this is a picture from last year. That was one of our booth sales right before everything was shut down. But that tablecloth, uh, we made when we were daisies. And we had everybody contribute their old t-shirts that they had outgrown. And we cut out the front panel with the picture and we put them all together. And that way, the girls all felt like they were part of something. We were able to reuse something that was going to get thrown out. And, um, the girls were really, you know, they were all represented in our tablecloth. And once we're able to start doing booth sales again, we're going to have a representation of all the girls from the troop in our tablecloth. Um, and then another way to, uh, recycle material resources is actually recycling. Things that you've used for other crafts that you've done with your troop. So we did a recycle crafts project. And, um, I actually, I've been saving for a while with the anticipation of doing this project. I've been saving up all my, uh, paper towel rolls and toilet paper rolls and plastic bottles and everything. So I also have, um, a lot of old, um, outdated Girl Scout recruitment flyers. Because I was the recruiter for my service unit. Um, and so we did a, a project last year. We did a stuffed snow person, stuffed sock, snow person craft. So I had a whole bunch of extra socks because it was less expensive to buy a big package of socks than a whole bunch of little packages of socks. To be enough for the whole troop. So I had a whole bunch of socks left over. So I gave them socks. Um, what else? Yeah, a lot, a bunch of different things that I had collected over time. So I gave every girl a bag of supplies. And I said, be creative and just go and make something fun. So these are some of the pictures of things that the girls did. Um, I made a necklace. My daughter made a squishy with the sock and some foam that was left over from the seats from our sit-upons. Um, one of my girls made a dog toy. You can see her dog there enjoying that. It was very cute. Um, she also made, uh, some kind of keepsake box. And what else? I can't see what the other girls made, but they, they all made really cute things. Um, it was very creative and fun. And that was another one of their favorite things to do. They really enjoyed that. So. Anything that you have that you think might be garbage could be a craft supply. So just keep that in mind. So, um, I always try to find freebies wherever I can. And, um, I'm always looking online. And somebody had posted on Facebook in my local Facebook group. That she had a whole bunch of old Girl Scout patches. I was like, ooh, I can use those. So. So I went and got them. I took a picture of them and I sent it to all of my troop parents. And what I decided, since there weren't enough of the same patch for all of the girls in my troop. Um, I decided this would be a great opportunity, um, speaking of making it girl-led, which I'm getting, I'm gonna be getting to soon. Um, a great opportunity to give the girls, um, more control over what they do to earn their patches. So the only restrictions I gave them, I said, pick a patch that you're interested in earning. And design your own patch program for it. So the, the only thing that they have to do is learn something. So I said, you have to do some kind of research, you, or you have to, you have to learn something that you're going to teach us. In order to earn this patch. So for example, my daughter picked the costume party patch. And you would think, what are you gonna do for a costume party patch? But she's actually going to interview a theater. Um, costume designer and learn about costume design that way. And then she's actually going to create her own costume from leftover fabric that we happen to have in the house. So, um, yeah, it's, I'm excited to actually see what everybody comes up with. We're gonna be doing this in January. So I'm looking forward to that. Okay, so now I wanted to talk about using human resources or people who are around you. Um, who are, are great resources for your troop. Um, so my service unit implemented something this year called Share Wednesday. It doesn't have to be Wednesday. You can pick whatever day you want. But we have our Facebook group, our service unit Facebook group. That we, um, that we use to communicate. And every Wednesday, somebody will start the, um, the Share Wednesday. Thread. Usually it's, um, our media specialist, Jen Leepley. And, uh, everyone will share whatever they're doing with their troop. Either something they've done in the past that worked really well. Or something that they're doing right now, or something that they're looking forward to doing, just anything that they're planning. That they think other people should hear about and might want to, you know, use that idea. So, um, that's a great resource. Other leaders are a fantastic resource for, um, coming up with ideas. Of things that you can do with your troop. And then older Girl Scouts are also a fantastic resource. So this was the Raise Your Hand program. That, um, an older troop ran for the younger girls, um, over the summer. And it was, um, it was amazing. It was, it was fantastic. They learned, um, about standing up for themselves. And, um, how to, uh. Sorry. Um, it was, it was just an amazing program. You see a picture of the girls with the, um, compliment jar. It was just really cute. And they, uh, they enjoyed it a lot. So anytime older girls can do programs for the younger girls, the younger girls really enjoy it. Because they're seeing someone closer to their age and they're, they're inspired to, um. To do what they're seeing the other girls do. And then the older, for the older girls, it's a great leadership opportunity. And, um, really helps them with their public speaking skills and getting ready for, um, you know, opportunities. After Girl Scouts. So that, this was just fantastic. And, um, I know we're gonna be doing other programs in the future. With, um, with older troops doing programs for younger girls. So I'm looking forward to that. And then, um, I want to talk about using experts in your community to help you with your, um. With your troop meetings. So I've had, with my troop, we had, um, a nurse do a virtual meeting. To help us earn the first aid badge. And this is, um, actually another, uh, leader in my service unit. Catherine, her troop, um, did a meeting for their democracy badge with Valerie Cartwright. Who is a councilwoman in my district. Um, and she was also recently elected to the state Supreme Court. So she is a fantastic resource and she, she also happens to be on the, um, Girl Scouts of Suffolk County Board. So she, she loves Girl Scouts and she's happy to do these programs for us. Um. So you can use, you know, like I said, community experts, um, of any type, depending on whatever badge you're working on. Um, uh, police officers, uh, doctors and nurses, firefighters, whatever you're, whatever kind of badge you're working on. There are people in the community who can help you. And it, it helps to have not just experts in a field. But also just a different face for your girls to see, especially if you're virtual, if you're doing virtual meetings. Um, you know, it's, it's hard just being in front of the computer all the time and seeing the same faces. It helps to have a different face and a different voice. So now I just wanted to talk about virtual resources. Um, there are a lot of great virtual resources out there. Girl Scouts at Home, um, is the first. I don't know if you want to click on the link. I think the link is, uh, clickable. Um, it should take you right, I think you have to control click or something to take you to, um, Girl Scouts at Home. Page on the GS USA website. No, didn't work. Okay. Uh, that's alright. But.
It works, but I'm only sharing the.
Oh, you're only sharing the.
I, I saw it, but none of you guys.
That's fine. Um, so you can go there on your own, Girl Scouts at Home on the GS USA, um, website. They have, uh, virtual meeting tips. They have, um, they've adapted every badge. Um, at all different levels to virtual. Um, they have, uh, badge activities that you could just click on. And you can, um, actually do, uh, an activity that's part of a badge. They have an events calendar where you can see what, what upcoming events they have. Um, what other, uh, you know, badge opportunities they're gonna be doing. So there's a lot of opportunity there. So if you, um, let's say you wanted to do a particular badge, but you didn't really have, um. The expertise, or you weren't able to find somebody who could help you with a particular badge. They have videos online where you can just click and that will help you, um, come up with activities and different things for those badges. Um, and then I just wanted to talk about the Facebook groups. I'm involved in a whole mess of Facebook groups. Um, I didn't mention Pinterest on here because everybody uses Pinterest to get their ideas for activities. But there are so many Facebook groups that are dedicated to Girl Scouts. Um, and a lot of them, like this first one, Virtual Girl Scout Activities, is fantastic. I use that all the time. Um, they, not only do they tell you about different activities, but they have, um, all different councils. This is from all over the, the country, different councils who will do badges that are open to, uh, people from any council. So say you're, you need to do a journey. There's a council in California. Who's doing a journey in a day for that journey that you need to do. So you can just have all your girls sign up for that. And your journey is done. It makes things a lot easier, um, when you can't be together with your troop. So, um. Uh, so just, yeah, if you want to take a look at some of those, it's great. And then, oh, um, if you want to go back. And then the, um, the Band App, that is, uh, an app that I've been using with my troop. Um, it was recommended by another troop leader and it's really helped a lot. It's, um, it's great for keeping everything together in one place. So they have, uh, a photo album. They have, you can take polls. You can, um, there's a calendar. So you can post events and you can have people RSVP right on there. So it keeps everything really tight and together. So if you're having your girls vote on your, on their next badge that they want to earn, you can put that on there and then you can see how many votes. Um, are for each thing. And it keeps, it keeps everything together. So it's very, um, helpful for troop leaders. So that's why I put that on there. And, next page. Okay, so I just wanted to talk quickly about making it girl-led. We talked about, um. How the, um, the older troops can do programs for the younger girls. Um, and how, like, with my troop, we're a little younger. We, um. You know, last year I just had them vote on which badges they wanted to do, but now this year they're actually, um, creating their own badge program. So, um, it's really important to have the girls feel like they're more a part of what they're doing. So the more involved they are, the more engaged they are. And with the current situation and, you know. Less interaction, it's really important to have them be involved in some way, um, more than just participating. So that's why, uh, I really like all of the, um, the activities where the girls can really. Uh, be more, like I said, be more involved in, uh, what they're doing. And actually create part of their, um, learning experience when they're going for a particular badge or something. Uh, and then I just wanted to talk about the last bullet on there, the Service Unit Virtual Newspaper created entirely by girls. So this year, my service unit, um. Again, facilitated by our media specialist, created a fantastic, completely girl-run and created. Um, virtual newspaper. So if you go to the next page, you can't really see, everything's kind of small. But this is our virtual newspaper. Um, so our media specialist, her daughter, she's a, a first-year junior. Was actually the editor and she created the layout. She wrote the letter from the editor, which was absolutely adorable. And, um, and so girls from all different troops contributed. Some girls contributed drawings. Um, they contributed poems. They contributed, um, articles. And talked about different things that they had done with their troop. And, um, it was fantastic. It was amazing. And they really did an amazing job. So, um, that's another way to keep, keep the girls, um, involved. Is to create this virtual newsletter. It's, uh, it really, it worked out well. And we're doing it, we're gonna do it seasonally. We're doing three per year. So we just did our fall one. We're gonna do a winter one. We'll do a spring one. And, um, yeah, I'm looking forward to the next one. And so this is my last section, um, transitioning traditional, uh, traditionally in-person events. To virtual events. So a lot of the troops this year were able to do in-person bridging. So a lot of the troops this year were able to do in-person bridging at, you know, an outdoor place, a park or something. My troop is completely virtual and we weren't able to get together to do an in-person bridging this year. So we did it virtually. So I made a little invitation and I gave everybody a kit with an electric candle and a copy of the Girl Scout Law. And everybody read a line and the girls who were bridging. So most of my girls were actually just continuing in Brownies for the second year. I had two girls who were bridging from Brownies to juniors. And I had one girl who, this was her first year in Girl Scouts. So we made it a bridging slash rededication slash investiture ceremony. So it actually worked out really well. The, the girls enjoyed it. They all read their little part of the Girl Scout Law. The girls who were bridging made little figures of themselves. You could see the girl on the bottom. So she was bridging from Brownies to juniors. She made a little figure of herself and had her cross a little rainbow bridge that was made out of different colored popsicle sticks. It was really cute. And yeah, and that's how we did our bridging this year. All virtually. And that, that's it. I know it was a lot to absorb, but if anybody has any questions about any particular activity or event that we did, I'm open to questions. And thanks for listening.
Don't have any questions in the chat, but that was awesome. Thank you so much, Lisa.
Lisa, that was just fantastic. That was just like so, like stuff I want to even like steal and do with just my kids. Because I, I just was actually, you missed me yelling at one of my children before because I'm talking to her and she had her head in her phone. And I'm like, Evelyn, get out of the electronic bubble and go do something. Yeah. So they were just so fantastic. I love them.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
And we're going to post the information and we'll connect you because Nicole is, is taking a lot of information from people that do amazing virtual events, just like you. So we can house it on our website too, so other people have access to it. And then we'll also download your spreadsheet or your presentation so people can see it from our website as well. So next, I just have a little shot video that's going to let you know what's going on right now. So just hold on one second. Lots of videos today. Lots of things. Okay, now I'm going to share. Okay, so that, the biggest news in that video is obviously that the store, we have the deals. Those, those are all great. We have some new cookie stuff. That's all great. But the store will be closed for inventory. So the, the council offices close on, on Christmas Eve. And then they're closed until that, like after the New Year. So I think they open back on the fourth. But the store will be closed. All of the shops at all three locations and curbside service will be closed for an additional week. So those won't be back open until January 12th. So all of the orders that you would normally be able to place and then pick up, we won't be able to do deliveries, we won't be able to do orders. We're just going to be counting 8,000 patches per location until the counting is done. And because the auditors are with us, we just have to like close all operations. Now you can still buy things at GirlScoutShop.com. That will be open for delivery. I'll just give you a, another preview. The free shipping that they've been doing on GirlScoutShop.com will end officially on December 31st. And then on January 1st, they're going to have a new, like set shipping. So if you spend, I want to say it's anything under $99. The shipping was $2.99. And then from night, if you spend more than $99 and the shipping is free. So that's going to start January 1st. So if there's anything you really wanted and you didn't want to pay shipping, if it's like a little thing that costs 50 bucks, I would advise you to get it on GirlScoutShop.com as soon as possible because that will be changing in the new year. So that's for the shop. For next, I have a video from one of our Girl Scouts. Caroline Severino is a Girl Scout with us. She's 13 years old and she owns her own bakery. And so she showed us how to bake one of her cookies. And I will show you that video in one second. And now this is just to give you a note. This is a kind of shortened version of her video. We're going to post a full one with all of the graphics and all the cool stuff that Ketsia and Elena do that I am not good at. We're going to post a full one on our YouTube channel. Go in shortly. But this is a little kind of teaser that will still give you some information, but it's not as artfully done as some others are.
First, I just want to take the, take the batter out. So it doesn't fly everywhere. I'm just going to take the different sugars, so white sugar and brown sugar. Once the butter gets kind of soft, it's turned off. I don't want to get it too soft or it'll just get too melty. I like to add in the white sugar first. It's a bit finer, so it just kind of gets the reason. I like to stop at halfway through because a lot of the time, the butter gets stuck in the paddle. So just scoop it out. Once it's fully incorporated, just scoop it out again and add that brown sugar. Once it's going next down with the vanilla, I like to add in the eggs. I do it at the same time. You could do it one at a time. It doesn't really matter. I'm just going to scrape down the sides of the bowl because it just makes it a lot easier to mix them. You want to make sure that you've got a smooth or else your batter will just not kind of weird and lumpy. And it'll just get too long. So you want to make sure it's mixed well. Once it's done, I'm just going to scrape down the bowl one more time. And then I'm going to start adding my dry ingredients. I add it with my flour. It just makes it a lot easier to incorporate and to make sure that you're not using it kind of weird and lumpy. It doesn't have to be perfect when you're mixing it and you can't even tell the difference. But it does make a difference when you're baking. Okay, once it's fully incorporated, I'm going to add half of it in first. It's just a lot easier when you want a flour flying everywhere. And you're going to want to put it on if your, if your mixer has a stir thing. If it has a stir thing or else just put it on. On the sides of the bowl, just so it's whole even when you're adding your ingredients. Which this time will be chocolate chips and butter scotch chips. So I like to use an even amount of butter scotch and chocolate chips. It's kind of about this amount. So, so once it's not too sweet, you want to bake it for a while. Then that makes it sit on a really low speed because it'll just fly out. You want to make sure you take it and get it out of the paddle where the chocolate chips are just trying to stick. And they won't really mix evenly. You know, that one little, way too much butter stracc and a little half way too much regular. I have two small baking pans that are each have a baking mat and are sprayed with baking spray. When I'm cooking, I like to use an ice cream scoop. Just makes them all even and it makes them round and better. So just take it, scoop it, make sure it's flat on the bottom. And then don't be afraid to touch the batter. It's generally half the time it'll just fly out. And make sure you don't put them too close together or they'll just kind of merge. The batter should be a bit sticky. If it's too rough, then you probably add more butter. If it's too sticky, then you probably add butter that was too soft. Once you're done, you just want to put them in the oven. Bring them in an oven that's 375 degrees. And you want it to cook about 10 to 15 minutes. When they're done, they should come out. You want them to be gold on the bottom and a bit on the top. And then you just want to put them on a baking, a cooling rack. So they can cool evenly and the air can just kind of distribute. Or sometimes they'll get hot on the bottom or stay in the pan. Generally, they should be kind of soft, but they'll hard enough to stay cool. That's all for today. Have a good day. I hope you try the recipe.
Okay, so that was Caroline, one of our Girl Scouts, who amazingly has this bakery. And she was, she shared her special recipe with us, so we want to thank her for that. Next up, we have the questions that were presented beforehand and Jackie's going to cover those.
Yep. So the first question we have is, will there be a training on Silver Award? Yes, we will be doing specific trainings on Silver and Bronze Award coming up January, February. So look on our website, on the program calendar, and you should see them up probably close to the end of December. And if you have any questions, you can email silveraward@gssd.us or bronzeaward@gssc.us. We already have a Gold Award training, for those of you that are interested in Gold Award as well. Next question is, can we plan a camping or sleepover type event? Unfortunately, right now, we're not allowing troop trips. So until further notice, all trips, including camping trips, are suspended. We're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed, that as the new year comes, we have some, you know, happier news to report. But like Lisa showed us, you can do camping from your home and you can do it virtually. So, you know, maybe we could try that until we're ready to get back outside and go camping. The next question is, when we can meet in person again? Where are people meeting? And there's two parts to this question. The second part is Zoom calls only last 45 minutes. What are people doing to lengthen their calls? Plans are expensive. Each service unit, to answer the Zoom question first, each service unit was given a Zoom license and with an unlimited timeframe. So I would reach out to your service unit coordinator or you can reach out to your membership specialist and they can let you know who to contact to use that license. Those licenses are to be shared throughout the service unit with all the troop leaders. So that will extend your timeframe. But if you for some reason can't because it's being used by somebody else, once that 45 minutes is up, you can just go back in and redo the, you know, the 45 minutes and just send another link to your troop and keep going. So it is a little bit, you know, of a So it is a little bit, you know, of a, to have to redo it, but it does extend your time and you can do that as many times as you need to. The other question about when we can meet in person, where are people meeting? So we are allowing in-person meetings right now and there's a various places that people are meeting. It has been difficult to find indoor meeting space. You know, most of the places we're seeing are maybe VFW halls. You know, but check with your community and check with your service units. They would know best where the places that are allowing people to come and do indoor meetings are, you know, for now. And hopefully again, as things get better, as we find this vaccine, as things go forward, maybe more places will open up and we can start meeting in person all over the place again. Our light show patches available at the light show for purchase. If not, where can we get those? So light show patches are not available at the light show, but you can get them from, if you did order during the time, the Girl Scout time and get the patches, you can get them from our stores. Jenna will tell me if I'm wrong about that.
Yeah, they, the ones, I think they mailed out the ones that you pre-ordered or you-
They did, cause I got mine.
Oh, nice. So they mailed out those, but if you want additional patches or if you can get a chance to take part in that, they're on our Shopify link. So if you go to our website to shop and then click on it, they're, they're one of the items on the Shopify link.
Okay, perfect. And then there's two questions next for Kelly. One is cookie rewards are gonna be really hard to hit without booth sales. So Kelly or Jenna can let us know, you know, what you think and how we can get those, those incentives for our girls.
Well, we just had to be a little bit creative this year, cause I mean, last year we had a ton of girls hit the marks for the upper level rewards, the lower level rewards. And we only got about two or three weekends of booth sales. So we were shut down right at the beginning of booth sale season. So my daughter was making noise. So, you know, we really have to start thinking outside the box. Jenna and I today, we're talking a little bit earlier about really promoting digital and really promoting virtual booth sales. We're gonna have a section on the website on just how to do this, how to do a Facebook Live event. So that way the girls can still get that aspect of doing a booth sale, but unfortunately, maybe it won't be outside. We're trying to brainstorm as much as we can on safe ways for the girls to sell. And we'll just have to see if in-person booth sales will be allowed as time gets closer. As Jackie said, every day, every minute changes what, the way we're living. So we're gonna try to revisit this in about mid-January and see where Suffolk County is at. And try to make an educated decision and see what we can do about booth sales.
We have more information at the next town hall, so even reason to join us for the next one, cause um, we'll be doing some other presentations on virtual booth sales and things that you can do that way. But one thing to note is, in order to do the virtual booth sales, you need to be on Digital Cookie so that you can share the link and they can buy the cookies that way. So just, that's all the more reason to take part in Digital Cookie.
And a follow-up was how to register girls for online cookie sales.
Um, I think I kind of hit that earlier. What happens is, is GSUSA sends out a link to each girl that has all the proper information in the membership database. And hopefully it will be out by the end of this week. If by early next week, you still don't see your email, just shoot us an email and I will dig a little deeper as to what piece of information we're missing. And all the girls should be good to go then. You just have to click on that link and it directs you right to the website. Okay, be sure to check your clutter, spam and junk.
And our final question is, can we have meetings by level across Suffolk County? We are, again, we are allowing in-person meetings, but it really will depend on where you live. Right now, we do have some of our towns that are, that are approaching the yellow zone and things of that nature. So just really be on top of where you live and what your community guidelines are. And we'll do the best we can to keep you updated council-wide. But as of now, yes, we are still allowing in-person meetings with up to 26 people. Of course socially distanced and masked. And if you have, if anything changes, please make sure you're checking our website. The front page of our website has a banner in red that has all of our updated COVID information and we'll put everything that we know. And as anything changes, that's where it'll be. So that's all the questions that we have. Does anybody have any other questions? I don't see any in the chat or on the Q and A. Anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. So we have one last video and then we're gonna do the raffles and Maria will take over from there. So this is just like a little video on the Holiday Light Show that features one of our Girl Scouts. So I just, it made me happy to see it. So I want you guys to see it too. Ignore all my links to Animal Crossing videos. That's just, that's just a problem I have right now. So.
The Smith Point Light Show is more than just a Long Island holiday attraction. For over a decade, Long Island families have come to love the experience of more than a mile-long trail of dazzling, twinkling holiday light displays right here on the shores of Smith Point County Park in Shirley. But the real magic is that the proceeds help Girl Scouts just like me. By purchasing tickets to attend the Smith Point Light Show, you'll help Girl Scouts like me to continue to experience new possibilities and to help build the leaders of tomorrow, one girl at a time. And don't forget to check out the all-new Girl Scout Holiday Way Attraction, featuring five new displays designed by our very own Suffolk County Girl Scouts. Tickets are on sale now.
Okay, I have to make sure that I close that, cause remember last time, you guys were all here last time. I know it, it started playing random videos. Okay. All right, so that's it for our show tonight. Maria's here and she's gonna let us know the winners of the raffles.
Hi everyone, thank you for joining us tonight. So we have four raffle prizes tonight. The first is a ticket to the Smith Point Light Show and the winner for that one is Cheryl D'Agostino. The second, yay, the second prize is a leather key fob and this beautiful trefoil scarf. And the winner for that is Jennifer Golden McGrew. Our third prize is, we have this lovely Girl Scout tote. And with that, you get two of our Girl Scout Suffolk County tumblers. And the winner for that one is Helena Yankee.
Yay.
And then our final prize for tonight is another ticket to our light show. And our winner for that one is Annette Kirshner. Yay. Congratulations to everybody. And I will email everybody to find out where you would like to pick up your gifts, at which location. Have a great holiday.
Thank you, Maria. All right, thank, we just wanna thank all of you for joining us. Thank our panelists, Lisa. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank everyone for being with here. I know, you know, it's, we're going through a difficult time right now, but we truly appreciate all of you and we're so thankful to be with the Girl Scouts of Suffolk County. So thank you all. Have a wonderful night. Happy holidays to everyone. Good night.